But I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners. I hope everybody is safe and sound. And I'd like to just express a big thank you to the RMLD people out there. Ready to keep our lights on as this storm encroaches upon us. So I know they're ready and willing to go, so hopefully it'll be, it'll be fine. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Phil Pacino will be the Board Secretary tonight. And let me just start off by just recognizing a few folks here. This is the, I don't know if you've all received it or not, the Redding Municipal Light Department calendar. But for some reason, I think they've just done a fantastic job this year. Joyce Mulvaney, in particular, in terms of coordinating it. And, and these folks at the, in the back of it, in terms of Redding, Virginia Adams and Amelia Friedman at the Redding Historical Commission, Terry McDermott at the Wilmington Town Museum, Patricia Romeo and Tom Parker at the North Redding Historical Society, and Ray Sorty and Kirk Mansfield in Linfield. If you haven't gone through it, it's pretty fascinating and the pictures are, are just wonderful. And it's a nice calendar besides. Kind of nice handling something analog as opposed to digital these days. So with that, what I'd like to do is, see, just ask, I'm gonna have this order just slightly modified here for the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board, who is here. Oh, Vivek, you're there. Hi Vivek. You have anything to report Vivek?
Yes, I'll just very quickly mention that, you know, we got a little bit of a fire hose of a discussion around Policy 30. We had two briefings today. And one other question, so I guess there's going to be one more in January. I know there's been a discussion about biomass and biomass in terms of the policy. So there was a report that was published by a DOE R consultant. And that report has some implications, has, has some insight as to the potential impact of some of that biomass supply in terms of reliability and price. So it's a question we're gonna, I'm sorry, I'm just condensing it, but it's something that requires some analysis. Because it's the plan, the roadmap to 2050 in the RMLD 2050 Plan shows an equal amount every year. And it doesn't, it may not be a very reliable resource according to the report. So I, I just wanted to mention that, so that it's a question that, you know, we will, I, I will send that question to Colleen so that we make sure that we have good visibility on the renew, sorry, the non-carbon part of the energy going forward.
Great, thank, thank you Vivek. And we'll make sure anyone who wishes to receive that report can, is, it's available to anyone and everyone.
Yeah, and it's on the website. It's on the website.
It's on the website. Okay, great. Fantastic. I'm looking for the liaisons from the Board of Select Board. But I think, I know Karen had another commitment tonight. I don't see Vanessa, so I'm assuming that they are not available this evening. So I'd like to do is just ask, first I'd like to ask Phil Pacino in terms of the CAD meeting, in terms of what he has to report, and then we're gonna move to public comment.
Okay, so basically Vivek has already kind of talked about the biomass. I'm not gonna repeat that. That was in discussion. The other item really, there was updates from each of the division managers in terms of 2020, 2021 reviews, which you also will see at this meeting tonight. So that was the main, the main things that happened at the CAD meeting before this meeting tonight.
Great, thank you Phil.
Okay.
So I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone who would wish to comment?
I sent a note to Tracy that I'd be interested in speaking.
Sure, go right ahead. Laura, yes.
Hi John, hello everyone. My name is Laura Height. I'm with the Partnership for Policy Integrity. We've, I've been following your meetings but haven't spoken before, so thank you for this opportunity. My organization had sent around a letter to all of the municipal light plants last year when we learned that ENE was promoting these power purchase agreements with Palmer and shared a lot of information in the past, and I wanted to share with you, well, a picture of my cat for one thing. That's Molly. Share with you what was happening right now, what that report is that you're looking at. So before you guys were all focusing on this, there were a whole bunch of hearings last year on the renewable portfolio standard and changes to it specifically regarding the biomass. And a very large number of people spoke out at hearings, including in Springfield where the Palmer plant is proposed, weighing in with concerns about these, these regulations. And we've been waiting for them to come out. I mean, the last hearing was last July, so we've been waiting, waiting, waiting for them to come out. And it's probably not a coincidence it's coming out now in the holiday season prior to the public engagement process on the state's Clean Energy and Climate Plan. So, but I wanted to share with you, is our opinion that, that Palmer would qualify for the, these, the RPS under these regulations. But I wanted to share with you that it's also our opinion and a number of organizations weighed in, including the Attorney General's Office, that the regulations are not in compliance with either the underlying statute or the Global Warming Solutions Act. So these regulations are still in debate. There will be requests for the legislature to hold a hearing on it. There will certainly be requests to the administration to hold off on promulgating them until after the public engagement process with the 2030 Clean Energy and Clean, and Climate Plan. Another point to make is that the Implementation Advisory Committee to the Global Warming Solutions Act, which has been advising the governor on his 2050 decarbonization roadmap, recommended unanimously that biomass be removed from eligibility from the APS, RPS, and the other energy programs. So we have a lot of concerns, but these, definitely, there's a, there's a giant loophole in these, in these regulations that DOE has produced. And it's not like the plant has gotten better and now it meets the RPS. It's that the RPS has gotten a whole lot weaker and now the plant would qualify.
Thank you Laura. We'll certainly take that under advisement. Thank you very much.
I would like to make some comment, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead Mary Ellen.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mary Ellen O'Neil. I'm a former Commissioner and Chair of the RMLD Board. I feel compelled to make a few remarks after watching the November 19th Board Meeting. We have a public utility to assure local control. The Board is responsible for ensuring that local control, particularly over policy and finances, occurs. No person submitting public comment should be subject to reprimand or censure. That is completely inappropriate. There was a flag, there also was a flagrant, there has been a flagrant violation of RMLD policy and of the 20-year agreement when the General Manager signed a very substantial power contract with no Board or CAB notice or input of any type from the public or any type of public review. Palmer biomass contract is now a signed contract and subject to open public discussion. Discussion of the merits of this contract do not qualify for executive session oversight. And it would be a violation of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law if this were to occur. I just wanted to also point out in terms of transparency and public access to what's happening at the RMLD. No minutes of the RMLD Board have been posted on the website since May of 2020, which is also a violation of my understanding of the state's open meeting law. Thank you for listening, and I'm not gonna be able to say because my dog is sick. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mary Ellen. We certainly appreciate it, your input, and we'll, again, we'll take it under advisement. Thank you. Anyone else care to make a public comment, please?
Mr. Chair, I would just add one sentence to one of those comments, if I may.
Sure.
Just that the report that was referenced by Vivek and then by the member of the public, Laura, was sent around to us. It's, it's a report commissioned by DOE R, which the Commissioner referenced. Woodcock is a very strong proponent and the one who is relaxing the rules. And the report, I believe, is, is not really an independent report. It's advocating a certain position and it's, it's great to have it. But there are other reports that we could have that would, that would, I think, be equally valuable to share with rate payers on our website in addition to this one, which I hope we can discuss at some point, what those might be.
Thank you Dave. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please. Bob, yes, go ahead.
Well, quick moment. If, if there is an intention by the state to classify this as a Type 1, which I believe it's heading that way, then it does qualify for all RECs. Correct? For, excuse me, for all renewable energy type RECs. Is that correct Chuck? Or Colleen?
That's my understanding.
So we would actually be, it, it looks to, at this point, like that would be good for Redding Light if that occurs. Is that a correct statement?
I think there's, if I may, Bob, I, I want, I don't know the answer to your question. I think perhaps Colleen and Chuck need to consider that in terms of what, what good means.
Right.
So I, I don't know, but I don't want to put words in their mouth because they, I, do you have any sort of immediate answer? Would you like to take that under consideration, Colleen?
I think that based on, you know, purchasing in accordance with the policy and the, the vote that was taken for how we were purchasing power since 2013, it would meet the intention of the policy. If, if the Board so chooses to change the policy and how we, we procure power by changing Policy 30, I guess we can decide whether or not it's a good thing at that time. I thought, I thought that that was part of what this whole training and policy reformation was, was the solution, you know, the end solution was going to be.
Right, so, and then remember the process that we've laid out. The previous was, meeting was looking at the, what the IOUs are doing and comparing them to RMLD. And then today, I believe, we're going to be looking at some of the cost impacts of this. And then in January, we're going to have an independent review session. And hopefully at that time, try to finalize Policy 30, which is the energy policy. And I'm sure there'll be significant discussion between now and then over sort of what's good. I think everyone's got their own opinion about what's good and what's not good. And we're just trying to balance everything between our resources, between the regulations, and quite frankly, between what our customers want. So delicate balance. So with that, if it's all right, I'd like to move on to the rest of the meeting.
Mr. Chair, I just have one more. Since we're on this topic that we're, we're all excited about, and I'm included in that, of course. I'm hopeful that we do the right thing with the Palmer facility. I think it was not last meeting, but the meeting before, we voted to have some sort of independent analysis of the Palmer contract, and I was just wondering if Chuck or Colleen or anybody can comment where we are on that process.
As part of the third phase of training, we were trying to bring in a consultant in January. He has not confirmed yet. We haven't confirmed what the date of the Board meeting would be. You know, we can get to that point and we may determine that we want to have more training to determine, you know, what would be appropriate. I mean, we started off these discussions with, we should be following the RPS. Now if the Palmer gets, you know, approved for the RPS, you know, we may change the rules again. I, I think that, again, is the whole point of restructuring the policy and, and how we purchase. The understanding that using the policy and the TFA transactions to procure, we maybe will go back to the way it was prior to my hire where we, we run it through the cab and then we run everything through the Board. And sometimes we lose opportunities with that because of how quickly these opportunities come and go. So it doesn't matter to staff. We can do it either way. We're just looking forward to knowing what the solution is and moving forward. As soon as I have the person's name, I will, I will send it out. And, you know, if, if people have other ideas of who they'd like to represent, please let me know. We're trying to get an unbiased person who can just speak to Massachusetts and that's an expert in, in power procurement, RECs, RPSs, municipal law, and across the board.
Thank you, Colleen. The next item is approval of the Board minutes, which is only March's minutes. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
Yeah, ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Move that the Board approve the meeting minutes of March 19th, 2020, on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second. Any discussion?
That was the last time we met in person, so.
Yes.
Well, that's the only discussion I have, just noting that fact.
Hopefully we can be back together, back together soon. I hope so too. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. President, I.
Does, yeah.
Talbot I.
Mr. Chair, just a quick update. I have the minutes for June and July, and we will have those available at our next meeting. I have them for review. I just got them on Monday afternoon, so. I sent them back first time because we listed two different chairmans in the, in the original June minutes.
We don't want to do that.
There'll be additional ones also coming your way, Phil.
Okay, great. Thank you very much Phil. I'd like to move on to the General Manager's report. Colleen?
Oh, thanks. I just want to give a brief storm update. We have, we had a storm management meeting this afternoon. We expect to have full coverage through the storm. We, because the governor has already asked us to keep all people off the roads, only essential personnel will be reporting tomorrow, but because we have remote work locations at homes, non-essential people will still provide business continuity at the office, although it still remains closed, closed under the Board of Health. From a community, community relations standpoint, the customer satisfaction survey that we had been working on is ongoing. From, from the phone calls will go through December 18th. The online will be available until January 11th. The, the Great Blue Company that we hired, that most MLPs hire, will be finalizing their report and findings at the end of January. And we will ask them to make a formal presentation to both the Cab and the Board at the subsequent meeting. The EV workshop that we had, we're probably gonna have to push till February so we can continue this very important and complex discussion on power supply. The 2021 calendars, the historical calendars that everyone loves, is going well even with COVID and, and getting them out to folks. We also bought a, a new little plastic kiosk that's out in front of the 230 Ash Street with the calendars in them. That is being, is, is very successful. I will move right on to AP discussion. I've just been asked to, to kind of give an update about the Commissioner AP process. So at one point, there was three commissioners that were signing the accounts payable every week. That got changed, I believe, to about one, just before I got here. Now, I just want to remind everyone the intent of, of the commissioners reviewing the AP. I understand that we process a lot of construction, electrical engineering. There's a lot of stuff that's in there that I don't think anyone in staff is expecting, you know, the Board, the Boards to understand in great detail. But I am a strong advocate for checks and balances. And I think with one Commissioner just reviewing it on the basis of checks and balances and to catch any gross errors that we make, that we may make. We have an awful lot of people looking at it in, in the office to make sure that it's good. But I would recommend that we continue the process that we're using. We've had some suggestions from Commissioner Talbot and Commissioner Cassino in the past that we've made improvements and we, we appreciate them, and that's for the best of everyone. That's all I have to say about AP process.
I see that item C is the General Manager's vacation time. Perhaps you could explain a little bit of that before we approach the question.
Okay, so because of COVID, we have three bargaining unit contracts and we have extended those folks some, some abilities to try to take some, some vacation, some buyback, et cetera. I don't have that in my contract. But because of these extenuating circumstances over the year, I mean, I could tell you personally, I've been at my desk since March when this started in order to be generating the, the emergency operating procedure on infectious diseases and handling all of the governor rules that were coming in and disseminating them to all of the employees. And I have not been able to take appropriate amount of time off and is just requesting if I can continue what I have left into next year.
I see. And hence the motion. Could we have a reading of the motion, please?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Move that the Board of Commissioners allow the General Manager to carry, to carry forward any unused vacation time from 2020 into 2021 due to extenuating circumstances resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. I rewarded the, the motion a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Did you get that Tracy? Okay.
Excellent, we had a second. Do we have any?
Good question. How much, how much is it? Just so we know, how much, how many weeks or days?
It's about 100 and, it'll be about 110 hours when I, by the time the end of the year is.
Okay, sounds good.
If there's no more discussion, could I have a roll call vote, please?
It's Bassino I.
Does, yeah.
Talbot I. Phil, sorry.
Thank you. Very good. I'd like to move into the financial report. Wendy?
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. So Tracy, are you sharing our my? Just want to understand. I can do it. Okay, I get it. So this year, we've made some great, even, even though it's been a challenging year, we have still made some great strides. And I'm very proud of the accomplishments that the team has, has accomplished, has made, considering what's been going on. And so we'd like to share with you the accomplishments and the agenda for goals. I first like to start, so Business Finance and Technology falls under my division. So I'd first like to start off by saying, of course, you all know, back in March, when everything hit, everybody was forced to hurry up and work from home. So the business side of things led the initiative for paperless accounts payable and the initiative for paperless payroll. We also committed early on in last year to a quarterly communication with the County Redding Finance and Accounting Department for the sake of, you know, a cohesive relationship so that there are no surprises and everybody's on board. That's been going very well. The business also is committed to integrated processes and procedures across the divisions to ensure that we make sure that every process is looked at through each division. The payroll side has developed cohesive relationship, in particular payroll, with the human resources for the sake of benefits and especially with the COVID FFCRA benefits involved. On the finance side, you are aware that the 2019 audit resulted in a clean, unqualified opinion after a very tough five-week virtual audit. We also were managed with everything going on to file the 2019 Department of Public Utilities annual return, annual return timely. As you are aware, the 2021 capital and operating budgets were presented and approved by both the CAB and the Commission. And credit and collections have been working diligently for the success of working with customers, helping any hardships, payment plans, and so forth for continued payments coming through the system, and it has been quite a success. On the technology side, you know, we've had quite a lot of bumps and challenges this year. And the goal is to, was to secure the RMLD IT infrastructure. Many lessons were learned after the recovery from the ransomware intrusion. There's been an independent consultant review with an analysis of a system-defined roadmap. We've removed and upgraded machines with outdated operating systems, strengthened user-level security with modified permission levels, and implemented stronger password requirements. We've conducted full inventory of IT assets and we continue to monitor and maintain IT assets to ensure proper security updates and patches. Looking ahead for 2021 goals, for the business side, it is very important that we develop a cohesive relationship with all divisions, especially with the integrated processes and procedures involved. So we're trying to make sure that we really look closely at each process and procedure and how it affects through each division. The paperless efficiency is, is there, but there's still some work needed. So we want to make sure we get some training efforts and continue to streamline that process for most effectiveness. On the finance side, we are very hopeful for a 2020 unqualified, clean audit opinion. And we are looking for succession in the credit and collections side as well as the billing side. In technology in particular, considering the IT department has been disseminated, disseminated, I should say, excuse me. IT's been working very hard shorthanded. We are hopeful to secure a new IT management. And with that, we want to migrate the billing software to cloud solution, especially for security purposes. And we want to upgrade firewalls, expand coverage and protection at the RMLD substations in line or above line with NERC compliance. We also are starting an initiative to investigate organizational software integration, particularly engineering and operations in the business side with the help of IRD to make sure that we find proper software that will help all of us accomplish all the goals throughout the entire organization. And that's all I have to say about the goals and the accomplishments for the business division.
Wendy, that's a, that's a lot of things and really excellent accomplishments for 2020, especially considering the, the COVID-19 impact that it's had on our entire organization. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, I see item B here, legal invoices update.
Absolutely, sure. Go on to that next.
Sure, please.
Okay, even though it's, it's a, it's a brief presentation, I just, it's easier for everybody to view when it's in presentation mode here. So I just want to go right ahead here. So what I did is, you know, there's some.
Give just a little bit of background in the sense that.
Yep, just wanted to tell you that.
Commissioners were questioning our legal expenses, how many there were historically, et cetera, and, you know, why we need, we need this versus in-house, correct?
Yes. So with that being said, and the questions that were arising, so we did a little analysis. And I want you to understand that legal expenses are essential in maintaining compliance with federal and state laws, standards, and regulations to mitigate the risk and liability. Vast, the vast knowledge and expertise it takes for a $100 million electric utility is demonstrated in the various categories. Policy review in particular, new updates and requirements on existing policy language, as the Commission knows, and compliance with requirements on new, on new policies developed. In the purchase power side, power supply contracts, ISO litigation, FERC regulations, renewable energy certificates, and renewable portfolio standards. Labor relations, we have negotiations, grievances, arbitration, staffing and succession planning, labor law, COVID compliance and liability at a federal and state level, FFCRA and employee benefits, and investigations. Another area, engineering and operations, maintaining OSHA compliance, terms and conditions, service requirements, handbooks, dark fiber contracts and negotiations, developing and generate the master small cell attachment agreement and multiple carriers and negotiation. In particular, 2020 has taken a hard hit on that area. Procurement and liability claims, vendor contracts, chapter 30B, insurance updates and requirements, electric liability claims, and the Wilmington Substation land procurement. The business and finance side, audit review, GASB compliance, DPU regulations, sales tax exemptions, fraud, town payment studies, and the cash custodial responsibility. What I want you to understand from all of this is there are multiple areas of expertise. And so what I wanted to show you is an average spending. And the reason why I chose an average spending is you need to understand that every year brings on new challenges. Is you need to understand that every year brings on new challenges. So one year may be a negotiating year, one year may be a litigation for power supply to make sure that, uh. Um, the customers receive the direct benefit of any kind of, uh, lawsuit that goes through. And in particular, like I said, this year, the small cell, uh, master plan is going through. There are so many different areas and even though the costs are, um, up and down year to year. This is the average yearly cost, yearly average for about four and a half, this is four and a half years of where we really started to hone in on the detail. Of legal expenses and you can see through the colors here, uh, policy review is this yellow portion right here. Purchase power, which is our biggest expense in the, in the, um, RMLD and also our biggest revenue. So here's the amount of, um, the percentage that it takes to handle from legal spending. Labor relations, so we have three CBAs as you know, and, um, grievances and lit, and, um, arbitrations that happen with those. Engineering and operations, he has this little brown spot, procurement and liability claims. And then of course the business and finance, uh, all, all the different miscellaneous business aspects. So then we have here is your, your look at your spending from FY seventeen, eighteen, the six months of nineteen. And then we convert it to a calendar year nineteen and calendar year twenty. So you can see down here what I'm trying to tell you, what I'm trying to explain to you is, uh, even though the costs go up, then they go down. And they go back up and then they come back down, it just depends on what's going on through the year. We have multiple attorneys working on ver, all of these, um, various topics. We have about six attorneys in particular, working so that we make sure that we hone in on their expertise. Uh, we don't use just one attorney to, you know, to provide the information or the law for every area. It's very important that we make sure that we, um, choose the right attorney for each subject. And that's all I had to prepare for that. Anybody have any questions?
Just, that's really, really helpful. Thank you for doing that, Wendy.
Oh, sure, you're welcome.
Have any other, uh, comments? Mr. Talbot, I think you were, you're really interested in sort of what was happening here. Do you have any comments to make on?
I mean, I think just what prompted it was knowing that we had. Legal representation on the contract that we're all talked about at the beginning of the meeting and, uh, somehow it escaped our attention and that's all.
Thank you. If there are no more other comments, I would like to move on to the integrated resources.
John, are you looking for the, uh, accomplishments and goals?
Yes, yeah, the twenty twenty-one review first and then there's a update on Chariot Solar and then Policy Thirty.
Tracy, can you put the, um, goal sheet? Thank you. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, please. Um, basically I've summarized and rather than read the whole thing, uh, I'll sit on a couple of the, uh, the high points. The wholesale side of our activities, uh, executed contracts for about, uh, twenty-five percent. Our annual resource portfolio, uh, those contracts, uh, are all of a non-carbon nature. And they can be converted to, uh, RPS, uh, or CES. Uh, or, uh, certified non-carbon, uh, going forward. Uh, as needed, once we, uh, complete, uh, the update to Policy Thirty. Um, we, uh, were very successful this year with our peak management activities, both capacity and transmission. Uh, peak management using, uh, the, uh, two and a half megawatt generator, the five megawatt. Uh, battery storage capability and our, uh, commercial demand response program. Uh, we saved, uh, almost six hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, uh, in annual capacity and transmission, uh, costs. Uh, on the retail end of things, we've implemented, uh, or enhanced, uh, a number of our programs. Um, including EV chargers, heat pumps, breaker panels, yard equipment. And this has resulted in an annual, uh, uh, savings estimate of five hundred and. Uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, I would note for the heat pump program that, uh, we launched something, uh, that we believe is relatively unique in Massachusetts. And that is engaging a, uh, contractor to help us with, uh, new heat pump installations. Working with customers to make sure that the equipment is appropriately, uh, designed and sized. And the customers understand how the heat pump systems are going to operate, uh, as compared to the more traditional. Uh, oil, propane and natural gas fired systems. So trying to increase the, uh, satisfaction and, uh, success, uh, associated with the heat pump program. The, um. Uh, solar, uh, program, uh, paid out, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in rebates. Uh, to, uh, RMLD customers for, uh, twenty-five KW and smaller systems. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand of that came from RMLD, the other two hundred and fifty thousand came from the DOER program. Uh, the DOER program is going to, uh, be extended, we just received word from ENE that. Uh, that will be carried forward to about mid twenty twenty-one. So, uh, when we receive that, uh, we will be. Looking to, uh, extend the program, so we will be coming back with some particulars on that. DOER required, uh, that we submit, uh, a residential conservation services filing that. Outlines, uh, what we're doing for program activities and, uh, we made that filing. Uh, there was another one, uh, that was supposed to be prepared, uh, and filed in October, but DOER is reviewing the filing format and the. Uh, reporting, uh, information that they are looking for. When that's completed, uh, they will be sending that out and we will be making the second compliance filing. For twenty twenty and the first compliance filing for twenty twenty-one. Um, we have, uh, implemented, uh, improved tracking and, uh, reporting. On rebate processing so that, uh, we have a better handle on, um. What we're doing with the program and the, uh, savings, uh, versus cost. Uh, aspect to that program and make sure that, uh, we are continuing to provide, um, a positive. A least cost benefit, uh, to our ratepayers. Um, in general, uh. Developed, uh, uh, the capabilities, the same, uh, as Wendy's group did. To be able to have employees work remotely during the, uh, COVID, uh, impacts. And we maintained our customer service, uh, response, uh, and, uh. Even while working at home, they were able to, uh, manage the needs of, uh, customers coming onto the system. Uh, whether it was a new customer, uh, final read, uh, or other activities. We maintained, uh, the support for, for those programs during the, uh, isolation period. Uh, next slide, please. Going forward, um, we have probably the biggest item, uh, that we're looking at is Roadmap twenty fifty. Uh, we are hopeful that that will be coming out, uh, before January sixth, which is the end. Of this current legislative session. Uh, when we get that, we will be able to identify the goals and the requirements of the, uh, Roadmap twenty fifty legislation. Uh, we will, uh, establish an implementation process. Uh, develop some tracking, monitoring, reporting capabilities for that and support the Board of Commissioners. As they, uh, evolve Policy Thirty, uh, to conform to the requirements of Roadmap twenty fifty. Uh, we expect to be continuing to enhance, uh, the wholesale, uh, resource portfolio. Uh, going forward, uh, we, uh, expect to update, uh, our analysis of. Uh, our power supply budget and our contracts and do some, uh, actual, uh. Comparisons to, uh, other products so that we make sure that our portfolio is efficient and effective as possible. Uh, one of those, um, issues, uh, we have, uh, a contract extension. Uh, the Chariot Solar, which is a combined solar nuclear, uh, project with the extension of the Seabrook license. Um. Nextero was able to come back to us and give us another six years of the nuclear, uh, piece of that. And, uh, because the market, uh, had continued to, uh, decline in price, uh, the last six years of the contract. Are going to be more economical than the, uh, initial period of the contract. So we will be looking to, uh, extend, uh, the nuclear portion of that contract out for another six years. Uh, making it a more comprehensive contract and, uh. Then, uh. Be able to, uh, add that into, uh, our portfolio, uh, as well, so. Um, we're, we're pleased about that opportunity. Um, on the retail side of things, we are going to, uh, continue and expand our, uh. Electrification efforts, uh, in the spring, uh, we're coming back with, uh, some additional, uh, yard equipment. Uh. Aspects that, uh. We think will, uh, enhance customer participation in, in that activity. Uh, again, we have the RCS filing sitting out there, we're waiting for DOER, uh, to tell us what will be necessary there. And, uh, we are looking to develop, uh, tracking and reporting capabilities on our efficiency programs. Have a new resource specialist, uh, available, so, uh, we're looking to move forward. Uh, I did not include in this, uh, that, uh, we will either be breaking or breaking in. The new Assistant Integrated Resources Director, uh, you'll be hearing from him, uh, in just a bit on the, uh. Economics of, um. Policy Thirty and the different compliance, uh, components that, uh, we have there. And that is all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chuck, excellent, uh, excellent progress, um, but would, uh, do any of the commissioners have any comments, um, thoughts? Et cetera for Chuck? Yes, Rob.
Um, Chuck, when you discuss the RCS filing, could you, um, explain what that is? Is that like, uh, somebody doing energy efficiency improvements at their home?
Uh, it's a combination of, of all of our, uh, conservation services. And basically when we made the compliance filing, uh, we submitted, uh, our budget. Uh, for twenty twenty and said, this is what we are planning to do. That was the, uh, initial filing requirement. We're waiting to find out what the next round of filings is going to require of us. Uh, but we're looking at, uh, that being two parts. One is what did we actually accomplish in twenty twenty, uh, with our residential programs and. Uh, what do we anticipate accomplishing going forward for our residential program activities? And it's more than just the residential audits, it includes, uh, the EV, the heat pump, the yard equipment, uh, programs, our. Uh, online store, um, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I, I know there was interest in folks asking for insulation and that, that was exhausted. Um, so that, that's why I didn't know if that was. I don't know if there was, uh, um, part of that filing was waiting for more money from the DOER. Or if that was gonna be even included.
I'm not sure about the insulation programs, um. We, uh. We'll be reporting, uh, that as a result of COVID nineteen and our inability to get into. Uh, houses and perform a standard audit, uh, we have gone to a virtual audit program. So we will be reporting on that. Uh, I'm not sure what the insulation, uh, standard is unless that's having to do with, um, weatherization. And safe.
Very si, very similar and I thought there was a part of the uni programs had, had that in them. I, I, I just say that a couple of people asked me about that and I, I said I inquire.
I know that in the audits, we will make recommendations about insulation levels. But we typically are not involved in supporting, uh, insulation retrofits because those are usually. In oil, gas or propane fired, uh, structures as opposed to those heated, uh, electrically. That is a component that we are looking at though for, uh, heat pump. Participants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other, uh, comments?
Just, just a quick question, if I may, um, just, can somebody, uh, just explain what the T, T, uh, send the TFA around to us so we have that?
I'm sure we've got a copy of that, uh, Tracy, do you have a copy of that in our, our files? This was the, uh, document, uh, that all the commissioners had signed, uh, a number of months ago.
Yeah, I can check that down.
Okay, good. Yes, would you, why don't you send it around to all the commissioners?
Yeah. Also, um, would it be all right if Hameed went next and then circle back to. Policy Thirty?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Hameed, are you, I think you're.
Yes, good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity, uh, to present my report tonight to you. Uh, I would like to, eh, make, eh, eh, acknowledgement that, you know, we, this year we had another successful year. Making major accomplishments in meeting the goals across all the areas such as reliability improvements. Engineering studies, designs, construction projects and maintenance plans in. Eh, eh, with the challenges that we met during the COVID nineteen, so we made great progress across all those areas. So, having said that, uh, I'm gonna go to, uh, slide number two, please, can you make the transition? Thank you. The first slide, basically on the left, you see that RMLD's reliability indices, which they're all well below the regional. And national averages and on the right, you see the causes of outages. And, uh, we got, as you know, we've been saying in previous, uh, uh, board meetings. That we received a number of, uh, certificates, reliability, excellence certificates, certificates from the APPA. We do expect to get another one this year, uh, because the other reliability is so great. Eh, and if you see on the causes of outages, you see in spite of the fact that we've had more storms and more animal contact. It's still then compared to the, uh, five years average, other reliability numbers are really so great. So I'm proud of the, my staff for, uh, making those accomplishments. And also meeting the goals, the reliability goals for twenty twenty. Uh, the next slide. You see the list of maintenance programs that, you know, were developed in order to maintain such good reliability, uh, indices. And numbers, so we have made, uh, a great accomplishment across those maintenance plans. And we met the goals for twenty twenty, we're looking for another successful year to implement the plans and goals for the twenty twenty-one. The next slide, uh, on this slide, you see that the, the reliability projects that are major contributing factors. To, uh, RMLD's overall system reliability. These projects are designed and developed based on the system planning study done in two thousand fifteen by Booth and Associates. So we have, these are the, basically, we meet, eh, we, we have goals for twenty twenty-one and beyond. In order to do, in order to complete all of those, uh, according to engineering studies that, eh, RMLD did as well as the Booth, uh, recommendations. The next slide is showing you the age transformer replacement program, which is one of those reliability goals. And, eh, as you see on the right that, you know, you got thirty-seven percent of a system transformers that they're. Transformers are, eh, twenty-five years or older and these are scheduled to be upgraded. And this year for 2020, in spite of the fact that, you know, COVID-19 slowed down the construction projects. We replaced eighty-eight of those transformers. And for 2021, the goal is to replace hundred. So we've made a great progress across the, you know, this area for upgrading the transformers in the interest of the reliability. The next slide is showing you the 2020 thirteen eight KB step down area upgrades. These are the old area upgrades in all towns that, you know, they're prioritized. And we're upgrading those as you could see the list of those. All of those, most of those were completed with the exception of one that is a huge project. We've been talking about the North Main Street and Lower Street area, which we are, we have completed over fifty percent of that. Again, this project slows us down because of the COVID-19 and challenges we had. But we still are making good progress on that in 2021. So we're going to continue completion of North Main Street and Low Street area in Linfield. As well as two additional areas that, you know, are to be determined. We have the list of all of these projects and every year we go over them to make sure the priority that we already determined previously. We still got to maintain those, those priorities. Or we got to change them depending on the outage conditions and the reports that we've been getting, the system trouble reports. The next slide is showing you 2020 overhead and underground area upgrades. Again, we met the goals, great accomplishments, the kudos to the crews and engineers and staff for making such a great accomplishment, achieving the goals for the 2020. So we have made lots, lots of area upgrades. And for 2021, again, we are going through the list that it's already been prepared based on the age of these areas. And we've got to do three more, which every little bit helps to improve the reliability even further. In order to maintain those numbers and keep them well below the regional and national averages. The next slide is showing another goal for the grid modernization. In 2020, again, we made the accomplishments and we met the goals for 2020. So you see all the projects that they were done. And in 2021, we're going to continue installing those SCADA switches, the smart switches that we do six every year. So far, we have installed twenty-eight. We've got another seventy to seventy-eight more to go. That every year, every six years are scheduled as a goal. We're going to be also installing the crew management, which is going to help us to manage outages much better in a more efficient and productive way. Also the meter data management that we just recently did a study in order to start the implementation, hopefully next year. So we've made some, you know, actually we are ahead of the schedule in some of those planning as well as, you know, doing the studies in that area. The next slide is showing you another reliability project, pad mount switchgear replacement. Systemwide, we have twenty-nine units. So far, we have replaced eleven of those switchgears. And the goal for 2021 is to upgrade or replace eight more locations. And once we are done with these, basically, that's going to have a major contributing factor into the parks areas reliability. The next one, showing you the projects and studies that they were done in 2020. In spite of the fact, again, for slowdown progress in few months during the COVID-19 crisis, I would call it, since March, starting March. So what we did, engineering started, you know, focusing on some, you know, some studies. And we made great accomplishments across those areas, the list you see that on the right. And we got a lot done. We really got a lot done. I'm proud of the engineering crew for getting those done. As well as the construction projects that it's unbelievable how much accomplishments the guys, they made. And we are ahead in schedule on those. So the next one is also, these are the goals for 2021, the reliability goals. I've gone over those during the budget presentation, so these are nothing new. So you see that the major one that we are hoping we can make some progress and hopefully we can secure the land. That's for the new Wilmington substation next year, which we are making great progress on that. And also the rest of the projects are planned. We've done planning. And also some studies that are under underway in order to facilitate the implementation of these projects going into 2021. The last slide is showing you the facilities work, the accomplishments for 2020. You could see that, you know, we got a lot done. Unexpected failure of the emergency generator at Ash Street, that's the one that, you know, was not scheduled, obviously. And failed, and then we did it in a timely fashion. That was another good job by facilities group and also engineers. And the list of other projects that they got done on time and it was really great. And 2021 goals are, you see that, you know, the list of the goals. The major ones being Station Three emergency generator upgrade and also Station Four's AC cooling unit. And also we're going to have some security upgrades that that is going to get put us in compliance better, more even in the NERC areas that is mandated. So these are all the projects, goals for 2021 for facilities. And basically, I'm done with it. I'd like to again thank the staff for cooperating, collaborating with one another, team working in, in order to make these great accomplishments, which actually was not expected, but we did, we did more than was expected.
Well, thank you, thank you, Hameed.
Thank you.
I think we're all especially impressed, as we have been in previous meetings with the RMLD reliability. I mean, you know, winning awards is one thing, but you've really taken it to new heights, I think. And I'm sure all of our customers in all four towns very much appreciate it. Electricity is one of those things that you, you just take for granted, right? You walk over to the switch and you turn it on and there it is and until it's not there and then you, you're beside yourself. You don't have a generator. So thank you and your team for accomplishing all these things in 2020.
Especially in such a difficult year, I just like to add, very impressive, Hameed, and RMLD.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I know you probably have to start getting ready for the night. So should we go through the procurement request and then circle back to Policy thirty? And just try to get these, these done so that you can focus on the coming storm?
Appreciate it by all means, yes, if you could.
Mr. Pacino, could you please read the procurement request? Do you have that in front of you?
He's on mute. You're on mute, Phil.
Oh, Phil, you're on mute, sorry.
He was reading it, I could tell.
I am reading it, okay.
I have a course in lip reading now.
I'm an old guy, you know? I got a, I got an analog telephone at home, you know?
Sorry.
Moved at bid two thousand twenty dash forty-one for line truck chassis and tailor and trailer inspection, preventive maintenance, and repair service be awarded to Taylor and Lloyd, Inc. For one, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter thirty-four B, as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Second, second, discussion?
Okay, you want me to explain anything?
Yes, if you could briefly explain, that'd be great.
Sure, by all means, you know, we sent the bid basically to nine bidders. And the only responsible, responsive bidder was Taylor and Lloyd. And, you know, these are the requirements that the requirements we have is from the vendors of these trucks. And these are some of the requirements are, you know, they be putting specifications together like pickup and delivery of the vehicles. Vendors must meet, must have a Massachusetts Department of Transportation certification. The vendor facility must be the mass inspection station for commercial vehicles. And also all the major parts, original parts. So for all the maintenance there, you know, that we asked, you know, only one bidder could meet all the requirements and didn't take any exception. And the rest of them, that the reason they probably didn't bid was because of the COVID-19 resource planning. And also the primary, the preventative maintenance exclusive that, you know, they're not, some of the, some of those being contracted out. Then one of the requirements for our bid was that, you know, well, you cannot contract out anything. Because the reason, if you start breaking apart some of the services, then they're going to, you know, they're going to start pointing fingers when there is a problem and there is a failure. So in order to avoid that, we put all the requirements in so one party would be responsible for. And in that regards, Taylor and Lloyd was the lowest and the only responsible, responsive bidder who could meet all the requirements without an exception.
Thank, thank you, Hameed. Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, could I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Pacino, I.
Just a step back, I.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Phil, if you could do the second motion, please?
Moved at bid two thousand twenty dash forty-two for line truck lift equipment inspection. Preventive maintenance and repair service be awarded to James A. Kylie Company for a hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter thirty-B, as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Could I have a second? Thank you, discussion. Hameed, could you?
Sure, by all means. Again, we sent this bid to nine bidders and, you know, we received bid from two companies, Altech and also James Kylie. Altech took some exceptions to some of the requirements and James Kylie did not take any, any exceptions. And again, the required requirements for the vendors were to perform the PMs at the vendor's facility. And they're not supposed to fire it out to other vendors and no substituting hydraulic filters or oil. And no outsourcing any work, which, you know, only Kylie met all those requirements. So for that amount, four hundred eighty-seven thousand and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents for three years.
Great, thank you, Hameed. Any further discussion? If not, could I call for a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pacino, I.
Just a step back, I.
Yes, sir.
Bye.
It's cool, Ty.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Hameed. We appreciate it.
I'm sorry, one correction I got to make, the bid amount was, you're right, hundred twelve thousand, six hundred two dollars. Previous three years, the last one was hundred eighty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and eighty cents for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. So this one.
Oh, so that's the major drop, yeah.
Yes.
So excellent.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, can we move back to Integrated Resources? Greg, I believe discussing Policy thirty.
Sure, absolutely. Tracy, do you want to continue on or don't you, are you in a position to do that? And if you could just, Tracy, if you just hit the minus, so you go down to a hundred and ten percent, and just, there you go, great. All right, a little bit of context. So we're going to do for the next couple of minutes, just extend the discussion that Chuck started us on two weeks ago. And what you guys had requested us to do is to compare the RMLD power portfolio to both roadmap twenty-fifty and also the IOU, RPS, CES standards. So the next step, what we, the next step for the discussion is to look at the cost impact of the current RMLD portfolio under those two standards. And we're going to walk you through that. As Colleen mentioned before, this is kind of step two of a three-step process to kind of walk through the context of Policy thirty discussion. Go ahead and go to the next slide if you would, please. So this is just a quick summary of what we talked about a couple of weeks back. The two standards we're looking at, roadmap twenty-fifty and the IOU, RPS, CES. The tables on the right-hand side are just, they're from the previous, just to give you a quick recollection. If you remember on the roadmap twenty-fifty, the discussion there is it's pending legislation. It would apply to the MLPs as it's currently configured. What you want to think about for that particular, the roadmap twenty-fifty, think about that in, as non-carbon or non-carbon emitting. So that's kind of the tag you want to think about for roadmap twenty-fifty. It does require certificates, including RECs and different measurements, et cetera. That's all kind of laid out in section fifteen of Bill forty-nine thirty-three, which was the House bill. If you remember from a couple of weeks ago, if we looked at the compliance of the RMLD portfolio to roadmap twenty-fifty. The good news is we are compliant. If we were to be applied to that standard, we would be compliant now. And we'd probably be compliant through twenty-twenty-nine. As you go out to twenty-thirty and beyond, remember that roadmap twenty-fifty standard is basically a every ten-year standard. So twenty percent in twenty-twenty, all the way up to a hundred percent twenty-fifty, non-carbon emitting. If you look at, and so the good news was we met it both near term. And also, if you remember in the upper right, so we'll talk about a slide here in a few minutes. But in the upper right-hand corner, you're going to remember some white space in that blue and green chart. It looked at a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to give you a record, a similar chart in a few minutes. But the fact that we have open position as we go out past twenty-twenty-five gives us flexibility to do power purchases that would allow us to continue to meet and be in compliance with roadmap twenty-twenty, twenty-fifty, should we need to do that. And we're thinking likely it will be, but again, it's still, it's still pending. The other standard you asked us to look at was the IOU, RPS, CES. And as you guys know, that applies only to the IOUs. It doesn't apply to the MLPs yet. What does it look like when we compare ourselves to it? And the lower right-hand table there, that chart with the green lines in it, basically you started to give us an idea of the complexity of that standard. There was the RPS, which is the renewable portfolio standard that goes back almost twenty years. And then back in twenty-seventeen, added on top of that was the CES standard, which made some additional increments. And as we discussed briefly last time, there's a variety of certificates that are required. And there's class one, class two. You can see a little bit of a snapshot here and they change over time as well. So what you want to be thinking about from the IOU, RPS, CES, think about certificates. That's really a certificate compliant program. As you remember from the discussion last time, what the IOUs typically do, they tend to buy power. Typically independent of certificates, they tend to buy it on a combination of price and risk or reliability. And then separately, they buy certificates. In fact, they have, they have teams of people that focus on the certificate purchasing and reporting. It is fairly complex, both the purchasing and the administration of those. So they tend to basically buy RECs that are not associated with the energy they buy. And they use those RECs, or though I should say RECs, those certificates in these different categories to meet their compliance regulation. So think about the IOU, RPS, CES as compliance. So we're going to, we're going to not just do some cost, so I just wanted to kind of bring us up to speed in terms of where we were last time. In terms of roadmap twenty-fifty, coming out of last time's presentation, which this is meant to be a summary of. We look fairly compliant. In the case of the IOU, RPS, CES, we're not very compliant from a certificate perspective. So now we're going to look at the cost implications. If you would roll down, Tracy, next slide. So what we, yep, perfect. So what we did here is we looked at, let's, let's assume a couple of things. One is we tried to do a comparison. We're trying to give you guys a kind of order of magnitude. You'll, you see every, you know, you see that three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three. That, that these are, these are meant to give you general directions, kind of categorization. So think about those numbers in terms of compliance value in that blue box to be, you know, somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand. Just to put things in context, let me go back and let you know what we did in terms of the analysis. What we basically looked at is the next four years, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. The reason we did that is that we actually have unit prices for certificates. Whether it be mass class one or some of the other certificates. And so we tried to use that as a proxy where we can give you a good snapshot of what it looks like fairly near term. In this particular case, remember that we are compliant with roadmap twenty-fifty for the most part. Well, we're actually compliant right now, if that were to be applied to us. And remember, that's a non-carbon compliant. I'll talk in a little bit more detail in terms of our rec portfolio. I'll talk in a little bit more detail in terms of our, our rec portfolio in two slides, but if we were to basically say, look, we need to meet that standard. You'll see in that second row, required for non-carbon compliance, that's the count, those are the number of certificates that we would require. And think about those certificates as being one certificate per megawatt hour of energy purchased and sold. Um, we put a unit price in there of a dollar ninety-one, we took that dollar ninety-one, um, from an existing contract proposal in front of us right now. Um, which would be to add REX. Um, in this particular case, it'd be FX. Um, so just to give you a general idea, you take those two numbers, multiply them, it's about three hundred and fourth, three hundred and four up to four hundred and twenty-four, but basically three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year. For us to be compliant, that's the value. Um, that value, if you think about it in terms of our rate base or in terms of what a customer bill would be, that's that last row. It's three tenths of a percent to four tenths of a percent, it's not a big number. So if we had to go out and buy those certificates, that would be in order of magnitude of what they would cost, but. Uh, because some of our portfolio already has certificates or already has, have REX. Um, there'd be no additional REX to require, so we're just, what, what we're trying to say here is from a cost perspective. The roadmap twenty fifty is not a significant cost implication. Let's go to the next slide. So now we wanna try and compare the portfolio, our, our MLD portfolio to the IOU, RPS, CES with the cost impact. And as we said last week or two weeks ago, Chuck pointed out that, look, we're not compliant. Um, cause remember, our portfolio was designed around the current policy thirty was, was focused on renewable. It wasn't focused on purchasing certificates, so there wasn't a lot of uh, certificates that we purchased specifically, we bought the energy if certificates came with it, great. If not, um, or if they were extra, we tended not to buy them, so we, we tended to look primarily at renewable, so in this case. Um, we basically need to buy a fair amount of certificates to be compliant. To the IOU, RPS, CES, if in fact, that's, that is the charge, and that's the comparison, that's what you guys asked us to look at. So we basics, if you remember, I indicated before that the different classes, um, of the, the IOU requirements for certificates, there's quite a bit pieces in there. So we basically said, let's use the mass class one rec as the proxy. For the value per unit. And then that same thing we did on the other tab, on the previous slide, required for IOU, RPS, CES compliance, there's the count. Multiply those two numbers together and, um, so the value is that third line down, which would be roughly on average about six point three million dollars in annual cost. Now remember, in our portfolio, we do have mass class one REX in our portfolio. So if we were to apply those against it, that's the currently contracted. That ninety-nine to ninety-nine thousand to seventy-three thousand, so we have some. Um, in our portfolio, but you net those out, the net required is that, that line that's in the top of that, um, blue box, that blue outline. Basically, on average, over that four-year period, about six point three million dollars of annual cost would be required if we were to. Basically comply with the IOU, RPS, CES standard. That's six point three million out of our operating budget, or if you wanna think about it more simply. It would be roughly about a seven percent increase or, or increase to a customer billing, just to kinda put things in order of magnitude. Let's go to the next slide, so before I go from wasting this slide, just back up for a second. But, so, so the, the key takeaway here, um, since we're not currently compliant, since we didn't design our portfolio to be compliant. There's a fairly sizable cost impact as well, now let's go to the next slide. So one of the other things you guys asked us to do was to look at, um, you know, how we, how these economics kinda play into our portfolio. And this, um, we laid it out in this format, it's the same data that we typically show each month. Um, but you'll see in a moment, I'm gonna compare this to uh, one of the other MLPs, one of the, one of the requests that came out of the discussions, uh, the past couple of uh, meetings. Is, you know, some of the other, other communities are doing, uh, how are they doing relative to this? And so we had a chance to, to spend some time with our friends at Concord. And then a moment, I'll show you a slide, but I wanna give you, we sure, we tried to create this slide to be similar to it. And, and what I want you to notice on these are a couple of things. One is that across the, so this is, first of all, it's a ten-year period, just so we can do a simple comparison to, to the conquered. Um, but twenty twenty to twenty thirty. And uh, we basically did somewhat what we do before, but kind of a simple stack bar, but the blue across the bottom are mass class one. Uh, those are, those are REX that, I'll say REX under contracted that we have at hand, uh, as we buy the energy. Um, that green is a combination of New England class one or class two REX. That would be main class two REX specifically, it would be Connecticut class one specifically. Um, so there'd be REX that are actually a, in hand, but they're from the rest of New England, they're not mass class ones, just to help you put things in perspective. On that pink area, um, are nuclear, so it is basically, again, we took the proxy of one certificate is equal to uh, one megawatt hour, so that's how we're doing the calculation here. The nuclear currently don't have any REX, we have an ownership position in Seabrook and Millstone facilities. Neither one of those facilities, um, currently generate any sort of certificates. Um, but they do count, um, under the twenty, the uh, um, roadmap twenty fifty standard of being uh, emissions-free. And they will, they could at some point generate uh, FX, but right now they don't, so I just to give you an idea, when we go into the pink area. Um, it is non-carbon, but there are no certificates at hand. The same thing is true of the very blue, that light blue at the top, those are basically hydro. Which also uh, don't have REX, either they don't issue REX such as the NIPAC contract. Or when we purchase those contracts, we didn't buy the, the certificates with them, we didn't buy the REX with them. Cause our portfolio was designed to be renewable, not necessarily certificate compliant. So if you think about this, um, much of our portfolio, and, and if you stack all those bars together, that basically gives you our, our non-carbon portfolio proxy. And that line that goes through, that yellow line that goes from the lower left to the upper right. That is basically what the roadmap twenty fifty target would be, now you guys know that the target is twenty, um, twenty twenty and it's fifty at twenty twenty-five. And so basically, just for simplicity, we, we didn't do a step function, we basically took it up. Um, uh, you know, one-tenth of that difference each year, so that's what that yellow line looks like. If you look at the comparison of that yellow line, particularly in the next couple of years, twenty twenty-one, for example, twenty twenty-two. Um, the certificates that we actually happen to have under contract, um, meet that, um, uh, roadmap twenty fifty standard. If you take all of, if you, you, you count basically all of our non-carbon producing, um, contracts. And you can see we're up over fifty percent by the time we get to twenty twenty-one. The other key thing to take, and, and the other key thing to take away of. Is, um, in the upper right-hand corner, you see that white space, again, this is a stack bar chart from uh, zero to a hundred percent. That upper right-hand space is basically open positions with which we, as we do contracts going forward. We can fill in with whatever, whatever standard we wanna meet, so that's the good news that we talked about before on the uh, roadmap twenty twenty-five piece. The other, the other key takeaway is right now and for through twenty twenty-eight, um, twenty twenty-nine, as you look in the far-hand right. And we would not necessarily have to purchase any REX to be able to cover a, a, a carbon position. In terms of, uh, you know, in that gray area, we don't need to buy any REX, we don't need to do any overlays. Which is what the IOUs tend to do, remember I mentioned earlier, they buy. Energy, they call it system energy, and then they buy separately, they buy certificates to cover that. We don't have to do that even if we're needed to fulfill a, a roadmap twenty fifty. Next slide, please. So the next one, basically, we, we, we tried to set this up, this is actually from Concord, this is one of their presentation slides, we had a chance to speak quite a, well. We've cut to them regularly, but we talked about this very topic. And, and we wanna make these two slides to be comparable, so similar structure, a hundred percent, um, on the left-hand column. Um, they happen to start at twenty sixteen, again, this is their slide, but we really wanna focus on, on the horizontal axis, twenty twenty to twenty thirty. And the same basic structure, right, they have mass class one across the bottom, that blue bar. And then the green, we call it New England, cause we have more than, than uh, main class two. And then the pink, we have the nuclear similar to them, and then the gray was emitting or the carbon. The other thing to keep in mind here on there is if you look at twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. You see that, uh, purchased mass class one REX, so basically that's the overlay. So they needed to, in order to cover their current, um, emitting or their current carbon position. And in order to fulfill their internal standards, they needed to get, to buy a substantial portion of certificates. In this particular case, mass class one REX to cover those positions to meet their internal standards, twenty-four percent in twenty twenty. And forty-four percent in twenty twenty-one. To give you an idea what the implications, you, you'll see that in that right-hand, uh, column there, the third bullet, but in twenty twenty-one. Um, as it says, they're gonna basically double, um, the rate increase. Um, so they're basically collecting right now or in twenty twenty, uh, one point six million, twenty twenty-one, they're gonna be collecting. Three point two million dollars incremental, just to cover these, these rec purchases. Which equates to two cents per kilowatt hour. So they're in, they're in a transition mode, they're, they're moving toward, um, being fully non-carbon. But they're moving through a transition point right now. They, like us, as you look in the upper right-hand corner of their chart, have open positions as they go out further. Which is good, it gives them flexibility, but they've had to basically do what the IOUs do to meet their internal standard. They needed to, to basically buy mass class one REX. So i- in, in a relative comparison, we had, uh, so. The current portfolio for RMLD was again, designed and purchased and, and executed around renewables, not focused on certificates. Yet it worked out well, that, uh, if we were to look at a compliance to roadmap twenty twenty. We would still, um, be compliant if in fact that we were applied to that standard. Without having to buy any additional mass class one, uh, class one REX or certificates. So that's kind of a quick comparison, bottom line, um, if we wanted to compare the current, uh, RMLD or portfolio. To the IOU, RPS, CES, um, there's quite a bit of work to make us compliant and there's quite a bit of money required to make us compliant, significant. If we wanted to be compliant to the roadmap twenty fifty, um, it's not, it's not much of a reach, it's fairly doable right now. Those are the two key takeaways from both a compliance perspective and a cost perspective. That's, uh, that's, that's, um, any questions, make sense? I know we covered a lot of ground, we can go a lot more detail, but we wanna try and just.
Thank, thank you very much, Greg, uh, commissioners, uh, you have any questions for Greg?
Yes, Bob? So, um, at, at this point. I, I guess I'm, I'm interpreting, why would we purchase REX? In the open market and increase costs when we can meet it with the, with our current portfolio?
Yeah, and so make sure, Robert, I don't wanna, so we're not currently buying REX on the open market. Um, some of our contracts come with REX already, without a significant incremental cost or any incremental cost, so we've, we've accepted them. But we are not currently going out and buying REX separately, for the exact reason, because we don't wanna increase our costs, um, and. Again, our portfolio is designed about being renewable, not to be certificate, um, compliant.
Mr. Jerry, what, any comments?
Yeah, and again, this, this was meant just to be an intermediate, again, we're keeping a level two of three levels of training, so to speak, or background. I'm sorry, go ahead, there was a question?
Yeah, thank you, Greg, that was a very nice job, very interesting report. And a lot of information to sift through.
Yeah.
Um, earlier in, in our meetings, we've been talking about. Hey, what's the difference between us and the IOUs and this six point five percent cost increase? Can you just give us this simple couple of sentences, if, let's say in a hypothetical world, that was how we lived. What would be, how much more renewables would we have than we have now? Is that easy to answer?
Yeah, so, so I, uh, Dave, yeah, so I, I think the way we think about it, we would not necessarily change our portfolio. Um, but since we have a lot of non-carbon or a lot of, um, uh, clean energy, renewable energy. But we don't have the associated certificates, we'd have to go buy certificates, so we, we wouldn't necessarily change our portfolio over the next eight, nine years. But we would need to buy certificates to be able to state that we were compliant. So we would be in this, we would be in a boat similar to the IOUs. Um, our portfolio happens to be much more renewable, um, theirs is not, that's a whole different discussion. But we'd have to do the same thing that they're doing, which is to go out in the open market and just buy certificates to be certificate compliant.
Do you follow? Where are those coming from then? Where'd they come from?
So, so generating assets, um, so renewable generating assets. Uh, need to register with mass D O E R to be qualifying. And then the, um, uh, NEPOL basically manages those certificates. So renewable assets basically sell their power and sell their certificates. Sometimes you can buy them together, sometimes you buy them separate. Um, and so those that are bought separate, the certificates are just bought as a separate, I won't call it a byproduct, but basically a separate product. Coming out of the generating asset, renewable generating asset. And those only can be sold if those certificates are only valid if they've been approved by mass D O E R and then managed by NEPOL.
So it kinda dovetails with Bob's question, he's like, why would we buy? And I'm saying, what would happen if we bought, so it's sort of like two ways of asking.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, um, so we have certificates that we've acquired, not necessarily because they were, they were bundled to certain ask that, on, on certain contracts. Um, they're not separated, they're bundled together.
I understand.
And so, so there was, there were not necessarily incremental costs for us to do that, so we said, sure, we'll take them. There are other ones where they're separated, and we said, look, we want the energy because it's renewable, we don't wanna pay extra, going back to Bob's. Yeah, okay.
But, but it, but to get back to, you know, you only can claim you have renewable power if you retain the rec, right?
From a compliance perspective, that's from a, from an, from an IOU, RPS, CES perspective, that's correct, if you, if you're gonna go to that.
As opposed to, as opposed to what, a no regulation perspective?
Well, so, you know, take Concord, for example, Dave, so what, what they basically said, look, we're gonna call ourselves non-carbon. Um, and so we're gonna look at our portfolio and say, look, we, we think that, um, so they get approval, and this is an internal discussion for them. If there's any sort of a rec, we'll call it, um, if it has no REX such as Seabrook or Millstone, we'll still call it, um, as compliant. Because it's non, non, um, non-emitting, it's emission-free. So they, so they basically have their own standard, and for us, we could do something very similar if we wanted to. But you're right, if we wanted to go and be compliant to an IOU standard, which is, we had to do reporting back into, uh, the state. Then we would have to have those certificates. That's a decision for us to make internally, now, the, the roadmap, um, twenty fifty. Has, has three different categories, I'm, I'm getting too much in detail, but there's three different, uh, sets of certificates. Um, or, um, or equivalents that are built into the roadmap twenty fifty. Um, so it's, there's a little bit more leniency in terms of, of, uh, looking for the paper behind the, uh, the non, the non-carbon, um, asset.
Thank you, I just have one very quick follow-up, um, in that six, six point five percent. What portion of that is the RPS class one portion as opposed to the others?
Oh, for that example, I, I basically said all the class one. So I just, I took a, a mass class one, cause one of the things we talked about the previous few weeks were, look, our standard's gonna be mass class one, so that's what I used for this analysis.
Thank you.
No, and, and those numbers come off of, uh, so, you know, we get, there's, uh, for the next four years, you get an idea of what the prices are, just so that we have, uh. Something solid, we basically took the, the December tenth, the report in terms of what the prices were forecasted to be for each of those four years. So we have, we have real numbers to work with.
Greg, thank you very much, that was a excellent presentation and, um, this is clearly a very complicated, uh, issue. Uh, in terms of what we wanna be, right? And, and so hopefully by our next session in January, we can get some closure on that, and I certainly hope that we can. Uh, but you needed really this foundation to kinda set the stage, I think, for all of that, and I'm sure all the commissioners and the public. Certainly, uh, appreciate all the work that's been put into this.
Totally, yeah.
Uh, Colleen, can the, yes, please? You're muted, Colleen, sorry.
As part of Chuck's presentation, uh, we discussed the chariot, um, project that we have currently. It's a combination of solar, which everyone knows, uh, you know, the sun's not out all the time and presents a duck curve. That we fill in with nuclear, we have an opportunity on the table now by, that we have to let them know by October eighteen. If we're gonna extend that for six years, now that's something we would have done under the policy, but given the conversations. Um, I'm not sure how you wanna handle that, because we, we do, we do push through. I'm not sure how you want to handle that because we, we do, we do push through.
I'm sorry, where was the cutoff date for that? For we have to respond by?
December 18th.
Which is tomorrow?
Yes.
Friday.
Right. So as I understand it, it's an extension of what we already have being nuclear and solar. Is that correct?
And was Of part of what we already have. The, the solar goes on for the full life of the solar component. The nuclear was not extended as far as the solar. Because Seabrook's license hadn't been extended. Now that the license has been extended, Nextera has come back and offered to extend the nuclear portion of that contract out for another six years. So what it would be doing is replicating the front end of the contract on the backend. Instead of it just falling off and being all solar, they're saying, let's put it back into a combination contract. It would be a lower price. It would be essentially dispatchable because the nuclear is guaranteeing the profile. And it would reduce the package cost because A, the nuclear was bringing the price down and B, the nuclear is being sold at even lower than it was at the front end. So.
Okay. And so are you looking to the board for approval to extend this contract tonight? Because it's a one, one day.
Yeah, I'm saying that typically these would be pushed through, through the policy, but if we're, we're saying that, you know, the TFAs and the policy purchases, now we're going to look at stopping each and every one of them. Push them through the CBA or the CAB and through the board. You know, because we're in a transitional period here. I don't want to, I don't want to continue because we, we take advantage of these concepts and, and the IRD group does all the analysis on the cost and makes recommendations to me. And this is something that we would have extended through. But I don't want to do anything. And we have ones that come to our desks, you know, weekly.
Uh, yes, Bob?
I, I, I know we had mentioned, well, I, I, I wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, when you gave the presentation, what's, what's a monetary value that you feel you could execute a rec for or discuss a mon- that you need nimbleness on, that you can act quickly? You know, one, $10 million? No way. You know, is it, is it a million dollars? You know, what's, what's a point? That you feel the contract is I, I, I think small enough that, you know, or, or what the board feels like is small enough to give you the ability to do that. $20 million? No, you know, that's, that's too big. If, is it $10 million? Scope is important here as, as to size and to make a decision. So I, I, you know, and we, we talked about the AP process earlier, AP process, we review bills down to $100. Or, or lower. So, you know, we're going through that type of scrutiny. So your, to your point, Colleen, yeah, I, I, I'd like to know the dollar value of the contract, but I know we don't want to talk about the dollar value of the contract. We have these ballpark numbers. But yeah, it's a very important to, to discuss with the board.
Can I, can I add one piece of perspective to what Bob just said?
Okay.
It's just, yes, it's the dollar amount. Yes. And it's also how urgent is the timeframe that requires a decision within day, you know, a week or a few days or a month as opposed to for something that might be a proposed power plant that wouldn't get built for three or four years?
Well, this certainly sounds pretty urgent and
This one is, yeah, this one, yes.
Yeah. And it sounds like it's an extension of what we already have, which is a good extension, if I've heard this correctly. Would commissioners agree?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, so you have that's the board, I think.
So what do we need to do to give, well, Colleen, I think you need to give us a sense of sort of the scale of this, as Bob had just mentioned. Can you give us a ballpark sort of scale per year?
Chuck can give you the layout.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that this piece represents about 5% of our portfolio for a six-year period.
Okay.
And ballpark, we would put this under a $2 million aggregate impact.
So how do we proceed if we'd like to approve or give the approval to our general manager? Phil, do you have any thoughts on that? Can we have a? But it's not in the agenda, obviously, but it's obviously very material to, we'd be able to respond very quickly. We have a, a motion to allow the general manager to proceed on this particular contract?
So Mr. Chair. Basically, I, I think we have a policy in place. I mean, if we want to change the policy, we need to change the policy.
Oh, I see.
Right now, Colleen's following the policy. And I think she should go forward. I mean, well, you know, this doesn't sound like it's a major contract. You know, and I've always been concerned about timing. Because some of these contracts are open from, you know, I don't know if it's still the case, but some come open and they close within an hour of each other. You know, so, you know, I think Colleen should continue to follow the policy. If we want to change the policy, we change the policy and put some sort of limits. As Bob has suggested, in terms of some sort of magnitude of, of number and going forward. I mean, right now, I don't think we need to take any kind of vote here. I think it's very much the sense of the commission that Colleen go forward and, and the department go forward in terms of executing this contract.
That's very helpful, Phil. Thank you. Do the commissioners agree?
I share that take very much. Yeah.
Bob?
I, I, I appreciate knowing about this contract and I appreciate the, the number. Was that $2 million annual or total?
Million annual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. And I agree too, John.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I think we have consensus, Colleen, that you have certainly existing policy.
Okay. The discussion was on the agenda under chariot. Chuck did discuss it. And a lot of times these things, they come up. We sign contracts, they may not even take effect for two years, but in order to facilitate. You know, like if a solar deal is trying to be put with a nuclear deal, they have to get the whole deal together. It may not actually go into the portfolio for another two years, but that doesn't, on the end of the facilitators that are putting these things together and, and, and pricing it out. So that we can jump on the price. That often happens way before something either gets built or actually gets put into our portfolio. So the timing is a little bit different from when it actually turns on.
Okay. Thank you for that. I, I think we have consensus though, in terms of let's move forward with it, especially given the timeframe. So without, we do not need to change anything about what you need to do. Bob, you had a question?
No, no, I, I, I think that, that, that this is a, a prime example of it, just knowledge of, of the contract, knowledge of it. That, 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 that's exactly what I know I would be, I would be looking for. Yeah.
We had been taking the contracts and, and reinserting them and notifying everybody in, in the, the charts that we were putting it up and talking about them. Between now and when the policy is changed or reformed, anything that comes across, we will come in here. If it gets to in, in describing, just like I have done right now, we want to remain transparent. We, we we feel like our portfolio is, is exceptional compared to a lot of the MLPs and what they've been able to achieve. Greg did a great job with some comparisons. And I just think that, you know, we will stop, we will do this each time. And if, if it gets to the point before we have a new policy that we need to call a special meeting, because we may lose on an opportunity. I will ask the chair if, if that's possible to do.
Excellent.
Okay.
If, if I could add one more detail to this. The Seabrook port about in the agreement would come with certification that it was carbon-free emissions.
Even better. Okay, good. Um, if there's, are there any other items to be brought before the, the board this evening? If not, our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 21st, 2021. Hard to believe we're into a new year, but thank God we are. In the CAD meeting, person, commissioner will be Mr. Coulter. For that, thank you. Could I have a motion, please, to move into?
John, I have one more thing.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's really important. I want to say I've been in a lot of Zoom meetings for work and war meetings. And I want to say that Colleen's background is the best holiday background I've ever seen on a Zoom meeting. Beautiful fireplace and the lights. It's amazing.
Well, it's, it's supposed to invoke some. It, it's the season of, of forgiveness and, you know, doing better and being kind to each other. And, you know, it's COVID. We got a big storm coming tonight. I, I just wanted to add a little cheer.
I, I think that's wonderful.
Done that.
I for one promise to be much, much more helpful to everybody.
It needs a cat jumping through the tree.
I mean, you know, realistically, we are all public servants and I think we all do a good job serving the public. And I, I think we should congratulate, congratulate ourselves. This is a very tough year. Everyone's switched to virtual. And I think we've made amazing accomplishments, as you've heard from each one of our staff. So personally, I'm going to pat myself on the back and we're going to keep going and being successful because we've made a lot of changes. And RMLD will continue to be successful in the future.
John, John, I mean, I, I actually called into the repair desk at RMLD, you know, from National Grid to request assistance. I couldn't get over how quick the response was. It was, it was, it was fantastic. So you know, and it was, it was like a minute. Oh yeah, we got a truck rolling. That's how quick it was.
That's fantastic. But Bob, we're going to have to do reciprocity on that now, right?
No, no way. No way.
Who owes one now, Bob?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to wish everybody certainly a happy holiday and I do truly mean that. And, and indeed, let's all be kind to each other. Because we've all been through so much this year. And with that, if we could perhaps get the next motion, thank you.
Mr. Chair, you ready?
Yes.
I am not going to be able to attend the 21st. I will be traveling that day out of state. So you certainly can meet without me.
Well, you know what? I was gonna, I was hoping we could change that meeting too, since Phil, that's not good for Phil. Could we change the date of that meeting?
Yeah. If you move that date up one day to the 20th, I'm fine.
That would work for me too.
I'm fine with the 20th. Any, anyone else?
That'd be the Wednesday as opposed to the Thursday.
Right.
Just like, just like this month.
Yeah, right. We'll just have to see if we can do the cab as well. And Tracy, if you could get back to us, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Ready for the motion?
Yeah, I'll move, move that the commission go into executive session to consider the purchase of real property and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I get.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Fine. That's very good. Real call vote.
And it's the I.
Alba I. Coulter I.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you for, the public for being here as well. And we'll see you at the next meeting.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.